Hey, everybody. Time is 7:03 and 19 seconds. And I'm calling to order the March 15, 2022 Westchester Borough Council Work Session Meeting. Number one was our call to order. I'm going to actually move on to item number three first, do our pledge before we get to our business. So please stand for the pledge led by Mr. Flynn. Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number two, which is to announce the purpose of the March 15, 2022 Executive Session. Council met to discuss personnel issues. Moving on to, actually, I think there are a few things we need to amend tonight. If I could ask for that.
Yes, Mr. Stefano, I'd like to amend the agenda tonight for two items. One, a motion to support the approval, removal, resignation of Lieutenant Chris Daley from the Westchester Police Department. And the other item is to hire a Civil Service Commission Legal Counsel.
Okay, so the motion was to add two items to the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Flynn seconded it. Just making note here. What's the other one? Oh, this one. Any discussion on that? Okay. You have to vote on that, correct? Yeah. All right, Mr. Metric, would you call the question?
Mr. Flynn? Yes. Ms. Vaccaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
And Mr. Stefano?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. I'm going to name the first one about four A, the first one that was referenced four A, and the second one, four B, on the agenda. All right, moving on to item number four, comments, suggestions, petitions by residents and attendants regarding items that are not on the agenda. If anybody likes to speak, please come up to the mic, state your name and address for the record, this is being recorded. All right, seeing none, we will move on to item number five, which is our annual report. I'm sorry, four A. Forgot, I put them on there and I forgot to get them. So item four A, which is to approve the removal and resignation of Lieutenant Chris Daley from the Westchester Police Department. Any discussion?
Think you need a motion and a second.
Yeah. Any motions to accept that item?
So moved.
A second.
Item was, motion was made by Mr. Flynn, seconded by Ms. Dorsey. Any public comment on that? Okay. Mr. Metric, would you call the question?
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vaccaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Stefano?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Item four B, which is, I don't have the exact language of this, to approve?
To approve the hiring of Civil Service Commission Legal Counsel. McMahan, Linehauser, and, I'm sorry, McMahan, Connell, and Linehouse.
Got it, okay. Couldn't remember the name of the firm. So there's an item to approve a Civil Service Commissioner, Commission's Solicitor Legal Counsel. Any discussion on that, or a motion would be in order to approve that?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the hiring of McMahan, Connell, and Linehauser as Civil Service Legal Counsel.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Ms. Dorsey, seconded by Mr. McCoy. Any discussion or public comment on that? Okay, Mr. Metric, please call the question.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vaccaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
And Mr. Stefano?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Okay, now moving on to item number five, which is our annual report by our Civil Service Commission. Mr. Polito, the chair is going to, hi, how are you?
You have our annual report there. Is there any questions on it that kind of speaks for itself? It was a very slow year for us because we did all the testing through 2020. And we probably will have a busy year this year, getting ready to test again. Any questions regarding that? And that's all I have.
Yeah, I think that's, I'm looking through it, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, we got, we didn't have a whole lot of candidates. And just to clue you in, 2020, we're going to, we were going to test in March. Pandemic came along, we had 120 applicants. We put it off till July. 60 showed up. Of the 60, 30 passed. But you got a bunch of good offers out of that bunch. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. If anybody has anything for Mr. Polito? No, I thank you for your, thank you for your report. Okay. Moving on to item number six, which is approving the transfer of liquor license agreement between Blaze Westchester LLC and the Borough of Westchester to 44 West Gay Street, La Scala's Fire.
Good evening, members of council, Madam Mayor. You'll recall that you had a hearing on an application to transfer a liquor license from a different township to the borough to be used at La Scala's at 44 West Gay Street. That hearing was conducted on February 15 of this year. You have before you tonight a proposed resolution which has the effect of approving that transfer. Council must approve the transfer before the applicant makes applications to the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. The applicant has submitted and signed an agreement with the borough that controls the use and operation of the license on the premises, including things such as security cameras, hours of operation, the type of restaurant which was previously circulated to council. So it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to approve that resolution if you so choose, and then to approve the agreement. I can answer any questions you might have.
Good evening, Mr. Esti. On March 9, we had communicated about the restaurant kitchen remaining open and operational for preparation of food. We're a limited menu during all times of alcohol servicing. Is that included in the changes?
Provision, oh, I'm sorry. And we added a sentence that says, "A limited menu shall include more than snack items such as peanuts and popcorn." So there is a sentence that requires, there is a provision that requires the kitchen, I'm sorry, to remain open at all times. And then we added that sentence about the limited.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else have any questions, or?
Mr. Stefano, I'd like to make a motion to approve the transfer of the liquor license agreement between Blaze Westchester LLC and the Borough of Westchester, La Scala's Fire.
Motion's made by Ms. Dorsey, we have a second.
I'll second.
Mr. McCoy seconded it. Any other public comment? Okay, Mr. Metric, please call the question.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vaccaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
And Mr. Stefano?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Moving on to item number seven.
Sorry, we also need a motion to approve the agreement between Blaze Westchester LLC and the Borough of Westchester dated March this year.
Forgot about that, thank you, Mr. Esti. Anybody like to make a motion to do that?
I make a motion to approve the agreement between Westchester and Blaze LLC from March 9.
Motion by Ms. Dorsey?
I'll second that.
Ms. Vaccaro seconded it. Any public comment on that? Okay, please call the question, Mr. Metric.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Ms. Vaccaro?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
Ms. Dorsey?
Yes.
Mr. Stefano?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Mr. Esti, is that? We're all good, Mr. Esti, anything else, or is that, that's out? That's we got, okay. Okay, thank you very much, yeah, thanks. Okay, moving on. I think we're good. Thank you. Moving on to item number seven, which is a presentation, accessory dwelling units by the Westchester Planning Commission. Hi, come on up.
Great, so as you just said, I'm representing Planning Commission here, and I should be here with Chris Patriarca, who is the chair. But he is called away working for the county, he works for Planning Commission there. So to start out with, I just wanted to say, and this is for the Smart Growth people, you're going to get a little bit of a redo. But, you know, why are we being proactive? What do we bring to you as Planning Commission? And so I just want to go back to the comprehensive plan real quick. As we did the 2020 zoning update, certain things popped out at us, and one of them being ADUs. So I just want to say, the purpose of a community's comprehensive plan is to look to the future and design a roadmap in the form of policies, recommendations, and strategies for future development, redevelopment, and conservation. While the plan itself is not a regulation, it should be used to inform future laws such as zoning. And my background is urban planning and architecture, and I'm very aware of the role that zoning plays in the way that we live our lives, the way that we interact with community members, neighbors. And so we are looking to, how can zoning, which we're often told is a living document, how does that reflect the needs of the borough and the current moment? So ADUs, what is, an ADU and ARP has this great little definition here, and I'm going to give you some documents after this. But to some extent, we don't really need it, we already have many ADUs. And we actually already have an ADU code, which is the historic carriage house ordinance passed in, that's the wrong date, it passed in 2001. But essentially, as HUD would define it, or if ARP defined it, it is a secondary dwelling unit, so it's accessory to the main house. It's a, what other places call mother-in-law suite, or something like that, granny flat. And it has working utility, so it has a kitchen sink and a stove, and usually a single bedroom, and is often placed above a garage. So why ADUs? Again, I'm going to, I'm going to give you these, so I'm not going to belabor this, but some, Chester County has been pushing for this for a while, and these are some of the things they highlight. Affordability, aging population support, open space protection, which is less applicable to the borough, but existing infrastructure efficiencies, neighborhood character, and aging, aging and placing seniors in Chester County. You know, the studies are showing Chester Counties that our senior population is going to double by 2045, and as the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission says, ADUs can play an increasingly important role for communities as their populations age. And ARP has been one of the strongest proponents of municipalities adopting ADU legislation. Attainable housing, Chester County says accessory dwelling units are one part, and I think that's important, that, you know, we talk about affordable housing or attainable housing, and ADUs are not going to solve by any means that. Will it be a step in the right direction? We believe so. So affordable housing. And this is a document that Chester County still has on their website, and is a couple years old now, and it's very clear, because this is showing the municipalities that have adopted ADU legislation in this area, and it's already very outdated, including the fact that they didn't recognize that we actually already have ADU legislation, and it has been on the books since 2001. So one of the things I want to talk about this evening briefly is that we, as the borough, as a historic urban place, need to think about ADUs at least slightly differently than rural townships. So this is West Vincent on the right, this is the figure ground, right, of their municipality, part of the municipality, and ours at the same scale. And Chester County suggests that we look to West Vincent, you know, or other municipalities, it's one of the ones on their website, as, you know, here's a municipality that's already adopted, let's look at that. And I want to say, one of the things that, that we have, right, that they don't, are alleys. And so here, this really has to do with detached ADUs. So in the definitions of ADUs that we're going to talk about, well, they could be a basement flat. I lived in DC for a while, and I stayed in a basement ADU. They could be above a garage, they could be attached, many different versions. But our version in Westchester is the detached historic carriage house. And there, we can see the amount of investment that has come into our community since 2001. And when these structures are built along alleys, they have the possibility to, you know, degrade, but also to uplift and be part of the Westchester urban. Such a key aspect, I think, of Westchester walking, biking, cycling. So this, in the West Coast, so ADUs have kind of been, you know, a hot topic for the last maybe 10 years, 15 years. And in the West Coast, there are very few alleys. And ADU legislation was passed in January of 2017 in California statewide. And almost immediately, Silicon Valley startups were offering, you know, modular units like this to be dropped in backyards. For the area, let's say that, here's the Westchester figure ground, this is the southwest corner over here. For areas without alleys, the Planning Commission thinks this could be, you know, very appropriate. For areas with alleys, we need to think a little bit more carefully about legislation around ADUs, so that what gets constructed contributes to the character of the borough. On the left, you know, one of our lovely historic carriage houses, and on the right, something that you might see in conventional ADU legislation. So you have a document which looked at some of those key points that, as Planning Commission, we were discussing. Zoning is a blunt tool. There are only a few things that we can talk about. We can talk about setbacks, we can talk about massing, we can talk about height, use, parking, that's about it. So, you know, we talked about eight, there are eight different points that we were discussing, and I'll just run through them very quickly here. The first one, eight, being this alley point, that for lots with alleys, we think a little design consideration should be taken into account, not, not at the Harb level by any means, but we can look to the Harb and the Saldo and others, just to make sure that the guidelines support the existing infrastructure of the borough. For example, one of the key things, and I'll get to that in another point, is that buildings built along alleys right now are restricted to 15 feet. And that's, from an architectural point of view, I'd say that's a problem to start out with, and that's, that dates back to the 70s and is no longer applicable. But also, when thinking about ADUs, we think that for buildings that attribute to the historic character of the borough, we should adjust that. Occupancy restrictions, ARP would disagree with us. There are two different ways to restrict ADUs with occupancy. One would say that to build an ADU, you need to be the homeowner, right? Like, so an absentee landlord can't build an ADU. And the thought there being restricting, let's say, yeah, out-of-town landlords buying, or rental property, you know, the price of housing going up even farther. And the other one would be, the person living in the ADU has to be a blood relative. We believe that, one, the blood relative thing is problematic for a lot of different reasons, which I'll give you this, and ARP is going to be more eloquent about it, but also, it's basically impossible to mandate or to follow up on. But we do think it would be valuable to say, hey, absentee landlords can't apply for these ADUs. This is homeowners doing it, that may, we're restricted one ADU per lot. And primarily, across the country, we're seeing it is people building these, at least initially for aging loved ones. Building setbacks, we already have a setback law, so we're just going to, we suggest we keep that. Off-street parking, and this is going to be the big thing, parking is always the big thing in the borough. What I wanted to point out here is simply the diversity of density within the borough. So here we have the downtown on the left-hand side, you know, that's our earliest historical fabric. We have in the middle, and here, there's a little red rectangle here, so we have 40 lots in the downtown area. In the same, at the same scale, we have 18 lots just south of there, between Price and Sharpless. And on, in the, I think that's the northeast section of town, we have 12 lots, right? So we think that just as we updated the current zoning, we have parking studies now required for each new development, that moving forward, we should, as we approach this, we should be sensitive to the fact that this is a very diverse place, and what is applicable for the downtown area would not be necessarily applicable for other areas. For example, that far-left area, nobody's going to be able to build ADUs there anyway, unless it's an existing building, because they're already maxed out with impervious, right? So we already have other rules in place that are going to stop different development. Oh, this is the building hype point. Basically, we have outdated language in our zoning that should go. So moving forward, we think that we should, we would, we would like to move forward with this project. To do that, we would need your approval that we could work with the solicitor to start crafting language around that, and we think that we should look to documents like this. Luckily, this has been something that municipalities have been working on for 10, 15 years, so there's lots of research, and that we should craft an ADU ordinance for the entire borough, and then craft alongside of it, you know, maybe a one-page of very simple design guidelines that, you know, Kevin can regulate for lots that back onto alleys, so that we are, you know, really living out that comprehensive plan, so that anything being built is contributing to the character of the borough. All this lovely investment in the borough, right? And I don't have that information for you, which would have been a valuable thing for this evening, but just to say that we have about 100 historic carriage houses in the borough. And if you know the alleys of the borough, you will know many of those, because many of those actually have been invested in, and they can only be invested in because of this legislation, which on the flip side says, I can have an aging loved one live there for a while, I can also rent it out for a couple months, then I can use it as a home office or any number of different offices. I'm happy to answer questions, and I also want to give you.
I have a few questions. So I helped work on that first carriage house you showed, the very, it was on, it was the Conith Rosely property.
Which one?
Very first, the beginning of the presentation. It doesn't matter. It doesn't really matter. But I knew that, that one. The age of that structure made it possible to convert, whereas on Sharpless Street, Neil Street, Price Street, not all of the structures are as old, and would any of the newer structures be incorporated in this?
So what we have existing in the book since 2001 was the historic carriage house overlay district, and so you'll see that on the map, and there are 100 and maybe 12 properties that have these historic carriage houses. So this is one. So since then, these have been able to be transformed. The thought moving forward would be that we would craft language allowing for new ADUs to be built.
Thank you. And then I've also seen properties in my area, which is Sharpless Price, add garages and various buildings, and they're not crossing any impervious laws, but they're creating serious issues with flooding that is not allowed to go into the alleys, the alleys aren't properly drained. How are you planning on addressing that, or who do I ask?
So it's a good question. So obviously, we have in our ordinances stormwater management regulations. They can be a bit tricky, though. So if a garage is being added on existing impervious coverage, they obviously don't have to comply with it because they're not adding anything new. If they're adding 500 square feet or more of new impervious coverage, they have to install a stormwater management system on the lot. So we do have regulations in place to help control that, but it may not always be applicable. But, yeah, we're in the very early stages of this, you know, this is, this presentation was just to get the temperature of Borough Council and see which direction they want to go with this. Yeah, we.
Right. I just want to make sure that that is paid attention to and.
Certainly is. Yeah, it's paid very close attention to when we are looking at reviewing applications for new accessory structures. But most of those new ones that you're seeing going on are just garages.
They're definitely garages. The drainage systems that have been put in have been inadequate, partly because of the area, that, you know, that, if, I think there might have been general regulations, but down on Sharpless Street, we like to keep our water. So they just needed to do more, and they have. I'm not saying anybody's not doing what they need to, I'm just saying, let's do more where it's appropriate.
Anybody else have any questions about this presentation?
I had a couple. I had two questions. One, it says here that we would include a residency requirement for the time being. So as to allow the homeowners to build ADUs adjacent to their homes, and not allow rental landlords to build ADUs. I'm concerned about that language for the time being. I think that needs to be firm. It just seems to me that there would need to be some sort of firm verbiage there.
We haven't crafted any firm language yet, but that would have to be done when we begin crafting an ordinance, so nothing is set in stone yet.
Thank you. And then what is one internal and one detached per lot? What does that mean?
That's not, so that's what ARP, are you looking at ARP's document or are you talking with the?
So it would, to answer the question.
This is, you know, a detached ADU, essentially. Sure.
Yeah, the.
ARP would recommend that we have one.
That's not, that's not going to work. It's either going to be an internal or external, preferably a detached accessory structure is what the ordinance would be geared towards. They're not going to have two accessory dwelling units on a lot. In fact, there's going to be, as Thomas pointed out, there's going to be several parcels that aren't going to even be permitted to build an accessory structure due to area and bulk constraints.
And one last question. So if you have a resident who puts an ADU in their property, it sounds like the resident could rent their home if they say had to leave temporarily, maybe they have a job offer for a year in another country, which often happens. But if they have an ADU on their property, they would not be able to make those accommodations to rent their home.
Well, the verbiage would actually, that is, you know, what happens after you sell it, right? So I do think there's an aspect of which. Same time. Not be too, that would be somewhat of a. And there are other constraints, too, for managing those rental.
There's, I mean, there's going to be situations that arise that, you know, we can't legislate, that we have to be aware of, but, you know, we can try to think of those, you know, at the forefront and try to address them when we draft an ordinance.
So I'm just wondering, will there be some sort of verbiage then, so that these don't become just another way to rent to college students?
They will not be permitted, yeah, they wouldn't be permitted under our current regulations that we have.
But really, what we're hoping for is the approval, just simply. But really what we're hoping for is the approval to just simply start to activate. So, yeah, Mr. McCoy, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to, just a couple of comments, no questions. I mean, I'm in favor of this. I think the carriage houses bring a lot of character to the alleys. I think I love walking the alleys, brings a lot of character, a lot of benefits to, you know, in terms of affordable housing, both the owners and people coming in. And I, I don't know what the numbers are for the carriage houses, but, you know, even if it were a quarter of 114 or something at, say, $75,000, it's over $2 million investment in, you know, private investment beautifying the borough. I don't really see any, you know, parking is going to be an issue, but I think, you know, at this stage, I would say I'm very much in favor and let's craft an ordinance that, that makes sense.
Anybody else? So, you know, I think I agree. You want some public comment? Yeah, let's have some public comment. Sure, come on up. Come on up.
Listen to, I've been in part of a discussion of thirty.
Just say your name and address for the record.
Joanne Smith, 539 North Church Street. Sorry about that. I've listened to many of the discussions at the Planning Commission over the last several months talking about this issue, and I think the borough needs to think very carefully before you embark in this direction. Number one, this, if I'm not mistaken, correct me if I am, this allows current garages to be reconverted into residence without subdividing it off. So I don't know how you can prevent it regardless of its good intent and regardless of how it may start out with a family member in it, and I have had one that I have lodged in our home for nine years. So I understand the good intent of what it can be used for, but I'm also realistic into what it probably will morph to. And I think the question about how you would prevent a student from renting one of these and having student rentals all up and down alleys, because the conversion of your garage now becomes a single unit of a student. I also realize that you cannot monitor and enforce the fact that the original main occupant, main structure, you really can't enforce that it's the owner of the property. Say, for example, you have a snowbird who goes to Florida, leaves in end of October, beginning of November, comes back at the end of April, and they haven't been there the entire time, but that rental may have had students in it. So I think we, we need to, I think this fundamentally becomes a question of what is the critical mass of the density of what you want in the borough. And I think regardless of the details, and I also acknowledge that the carriage houses have a lot of character. We love them. That's why, that's why the ordinance went in to save them. So the carriage houses are our now accessory dwelling units, but nonetheless, they have been there for years. This allows construction of garages or conversion of garages at the far end of people's property along the alleys just to become singular units of dormitories. And I, I think the reality is that's probably how things will go because no one is going to turn, no normal person is going to turn down having and making money off of their rental unit on the back of their property because it's a teenager or a student. There, you know, they may have had mom in there, but when mom needed assisted living and she left, what you end up with is whoever rents it gets out the back. And, and I think that part of that is really a concern. The other thing is you're not accommodating a whole lot for parking. This borough has a parking crisis. I don't care what you want to call it, whether it's parking challenged or whatever it is, it is a parking crisis, and this is going to add to more vehicles in the alley and on the streets. So I think before, I think we have to think carefully, and if we do, we have to somehow construct it that A, you're not putting up just little units, you're putting up something of character that augments the borough. I understand how an individual would say, I like this idea because it is a source of revenue. Hey, who doesn't like that? But I think the, the flip side to it is what's really in it for the borough to do this and offset the downsides of what this potential can do on the other side. So I'm just suggesting, let's think carefully.
Those are good concerns, thank you. Before, Mr. Brayson, one second. Before, could you address the student housing issue because that's the second time I brought it up and I feel like there's no way we allow students.
There's several things I'd like to just respond to. Number one, this is not going to permit anybody who has a garage currently to convert it into an accessory dwelling unit. Number one, we're not going to allow anybody to eliminate current off-street parking spaces. The new ordinance will also require them to provide additional parking based on the needs that we find necessary. The other thing is there, you know, again, as I previously stated, it's not going to permit just anybody to build an accessory dwelling unit. They're going to have to meet specific area and bulk regulations. If somebody has an existing garage that can meet those area and bulk requirements for a dwelling unit, then yes, they may be permitted to do so, but it's not going to just be a free-for-all for everybody putting an accessory dwelling unit on their property. As far as the student housing goes, we currently have regulations in place that prohibit student rentals. We police that, we enforce it, and we will do, we will do that the same way for any accessory dwelling and anybody who's illegally using as a student rental will be dealt with. And that's, you know, we police it now, so it's not going to be any different. And one last thing to point out before I turn it back over to the public. This, this, we're not going to see a massive influx of individuals wanting to build accessory dwelling units. It's a fairly expensive venture. So, you know, we get phone, my office gets phone calls, maybe half a dozen of them a year asking, you know, individuals asking about putting accessory dwelling units in. So it's not going to be a massive creation of additional dwelling units in the borough.
What would the average cost be if someone would try to do that? Because I would feel that would be expensive as well.
Yeah, I, I don't know. If I had to, if they were going to build one from scratch, I would guess it's probably going to be about $200,000 into the.
Mr. Brayson, come on up.
Hi, Don Brayson, 423 West Neil Street. Joanne Smith, I think, over the years, I think this is the first time I've been general overall global agreement with her. First time. But anything, anyway, the parking, I think, is an issue, a big one because in the document that I saw, it said that there wouldn't be parking permit, street parking. And I know over the years, we've had a few people come before council that didn't have off-street or street parking and wanted council to provide some sort of relief. A few times we could, I'd say most of the time we couldn't, and I would always bite my tongue because I'd say, why did you buy a house without parking? And I think that might have, I would not want to live in an ADU if it wasn't parking. So I think, and Joanne said, it's, it's a crisis and we all know that that's like the number one big deal in Westchester. I was concerned about the possible population density, but the more I think about it, as Kevin described, it probably wouldn't be an issue, but just keep the parking issue in the back of your head. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Gore, can?
That, we are not going to allow the creation of accessory dwelling units without providing off-street parking. So that's something that we'll have to work into the ordinance and how it's, how it's accomplished, we don't know yet, but it's definitely going to be a requirement.
Thank you.
Mr. Sabana, could I ask Mr. Gore a question? Mr. Gore, the ADUs, are they going to be inspected and registered just like a rental apartment?
If it's being rented, yes, in accordance with our rental guidelines. If it's deemed to be a rental, yes, it would be registered. Just like we don't stop a student from renting a single rental unit today. There's specific rules in place, but we can't.
Okay. So I think there needs to be some direction from council. Do we need to have that direction to you tonight or is this something that?
Yeah, I mean, we would prefer to get some guidance from council on the direction they want to go and.
So how about I, you know, we all heard from a few people who seem like they're in favor, at least had questions. I don't know about Ms. Vicaro, where you stand on it, but just to see where everybody kind of stands and that'll give the Planning Commission some kind of a direction on where to go. So I'll say that I think based on what I've seen so far, I think this is a great idea. I think there are some concerns and we need to address those, but that could be vetted out in the ordinance writing process. I love the carriage houses, I love the look of it, and I think it is a part of our town and to promote that would be a good thing.
So are we looking for a motion?
I don't think we need a motion. I think it could just be a general consensus, almost like a straw vote.
Yeah, I would support the ADU and pursuing, you know, how we can make it work for Westchester.
Although I like the idea of the ADUs as well. I think one point is we really have to consider is we do have a parking crisis in the borough and that is something that needs to be addressed holistically for the whole town where we can talk about any more housing in the borough because with .9 spaces per person in the borough, it's a, it's a big issue in the borough. And also, secondly, I know we, in your paperwork, you said you don't want to hold them to the HARB guidelines, and I know they can be pretty stringent. However, a simple design plan as outlined in your information, I think, is too simple because this town does have character and we do like character in buildings. And so somewhere we need to find that meeting point if we're going to go forward with these, particularly at 800, if they're only going to be 800 square feet maximum, they can't look like refrigerator boxes, container boxes put at the end of the property. I know in the designs, there were some beautiful designs in the, in the books you gave us, but they have to, somehow we have to have a design element incorporated moving forward so they don't look like refrigerator boxes so that they, so they do have characteristics that HARB looks like, so they need to be involved in this.
And I can say that if the structure is planned to be in the historic district, HARB will certainly be involved as they're required to be.
And so I'd say I, I would say that I. About that, actually, outside of the HARB, I think it's a, 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 it's[1587.37]
I just asked ESI, Econzo Solutions, that provided the economic study to us just recently, what they would charge to do that document, and it's $30,000. So that sort of shows you how complex it is. It requires an immense amount of data. That we now have a good bit of that, because we just got the economic study. But it's not even, it's still pending final approval by the county. So we can't even use the data really for consumption. And the other thing is that we really, for a comfort level at least, we need to have a matching funding source to say to the feds here, we've got some money already. It's like almost a good faith offer. And we do have that RCAP application. So hopefully, with the state, hopefully, by the time the next round comes, which we anticipate would be July, because that's what it was last year, then hopefully, we'll have that small amount of money, and we can add that as part of our package that we have that. The other thing is, just last week, we had a debrief from Department of Transportation on our 2021 RACE application. And the person from the bureau that spent a whole hour with us on Zoom, and he was excellent, and he really wanted to help us, and gave us some good guidance for next year. So we feel as though the next cycle is really appropriate time to submit an application. Because we want to get it right and get all the data. I talked to, I happened to be talking to Commissioner Josh Maxwell today. He checks in every once in a while to see how we're doing on our project. And I told him I was going to be here tonight, and he wanted me to remind council that the county is very much interested in pushing this forward. And he had his office send me three planning documents to reiterate the fact. The most recent is the Planning Commission Transportation Priority Projects List. That's from 2021, and we're third on the priority. So the county's really looking forward to this. Landscape's three, of course, is the county planning document. And then 2014 is a public transportation plan, and we're on that, too. So there's a lot of interest in getting this done. And we would really appreciate the support of council going forward, because we actually have a lot of work to do. Last month, we were here, and Tom Hickey, vice chair from our commission, gave you the data in terms of the money that we require to restore the trackage. And then he illustrated plans for the four stations to develop them further. Then we have operation costs to develop. So with the number of employees and salaries that would be required, and where we would get that, and different funding applications we're looking into. And we want to talk to T-MAC some more about that, and DVR PC. So we have a lot of work ahead of us. And I would just ask if council could give us approval to move forward on all this. Within the last six months, we've had two separate conversations about disbanding our committee. And there's never been a formal resolution. It's just been comments by council, and it's giving us sort of an uncomfortable feeling. Like to know that we have the backing of council to move forward. So I'd appreciate if you have any comments about any of this, but particularly if we could just get a signal from council that it's okay.
So as far, thank you. So as far as the RACE grant application, the next round, you think will be in July?
We think, because that's what it was last year.
Okay, so if we, what is the ask from, we have to approve you to apply for that grant, correct?
When we have it put together.
Okay, so, yeah, I think if council, as long as we're all still in support of this moving forward, could give you that approval, just not last minute. So as long as we know it's coming up, and we give you approval, and we know we're working towards it, that's one thing. What is the ask monetarily? What's the matching number? What's the match cost to the borough?
Well, the RCAP budget, line item budget application that we put in was for $1.3, for a million. That's a match for the restoration of the track. But we're now, we're talking about the total picture. So we go, we restore the track, we develop those four stations, we lease the rail cars, the battery-operated cars. Set, I say we, it's Tom Hickey, and he's really our subject expert, determining the number of employees, what the staffing would be, what the salaries would be, and that sort of thing. So we want to start with Mark Street Station and end up at Middletown, and all the money that it costs between the two to put this in operation. So that's what we'd like to do, is we'd like to finish the cost.
So you don't exactly, you're just coming up with that part of the application? Okay. You don't know that until you're, that's part of the application process, is determining that cost, is what you're saying?
We'll get all that done beforehand.
All right. And then the other thing is about the operation of the actual shuttle. What's the, where are we with that? Because I know there seems to be some of that up in the air, and that makes me a little uneasy as far as who's actually going to operate it. And I know the right answer for me would be SEPTA is going to operate it. Is that?
Well, they, we said so that, we met with them last month, and we said, hey, we welcome you to come in and say, okay, you did a great job, we're going to take over now. And I said to them, that's my aspiration, is for them to do that. And they certainly could. But their idea that actually that Tom had, maybe will want to speak to that, is perhaps talking to T-MAC, because they operate bus shuttles now. So maybe they get into operating rail shuttles. I mean, that's a possibility, and we'd like to talk to Tim Phelps. That's something that we'd like to do within the next few weeks, if we can do that.
Okay.
See what they would think about it.
Okay.
Is there any expectation that the operation of the shuttle or the rail would be the responsibility of the borough? So the employees, the?
Well, as far as the borough, the borough's not in the business of running a railroad. And so I would anticipate the answer would be no. Borough would have an appetite for that. If you did, then that would be fine, too. But we, yeah, okay, that's what I thought. And of course, the first Westchester Railroad was formed by businessmen from the borough. So it's not unheard of. But that's what we're exploring now, is to figure out who would be the best.
Mr. Flynn.
Good evening, Ms. Kelton. The, I'm going to pivot a little bit, because I've been thinking about this. I dream about this train all the time. And when Mr. Scott retired, I was gifted an entire Lionel train set. And my wife said to me, what the hell are you going to do with this? Well, the trains are as big as this book, one train, one thing. So I don't know where we're going to put it, but grandkids are going to get it. But pivoting just a little bit, because council keeps hearing about the various costs of doing things, doing business. We have millions of dollars we've been talking about. I wrote down some things that I'm going to read off and see what council thinks. The first, I wanted to commend your team for the perseverance of the rail project, because really appreciate it, and should be applauded, because it's not an easy lift. It's very apparent that the price tag and funding from the state and federal agency is falling extremely short. The real reason for the project was to move people quickly and efficiently from Westchester to Wawa or Franklin Town to connect to the regional trains, correct? Right. So I would offer this to council and to the rail committee, and to pivot just a second. First, to use as much of the planning and travel schedules that you guys already set forward, because it's all documented, it's well documented to go. I would engage SEPTA to see if they're interested in supplying and operating a hydrogen or electric buses along that line. To initiate a rapid rail service, remove the rails and the ties, and build an EZ Pass roadway, also using the signals and crossings and the village stops to accept passengers. By SEPTA or Craft Bus Company running eco-friendly vehicles, there's no impact to the environment or pollution or noise using hydrogen or electric. We won't have any maintenance, no rentals of equipment, no transportation costs, no buses to take care of, and no repairs. It'll be a paved two-lane highway, high speed. Like your proposal, after two-year trial, if the ridership doesn't pan out, we can stop the service, SEPTA can take their buses, redeploy them someplace else, or Craft could do that. And at that particular time, the county, or the borough, or the municipalities along the line can turn that two-lane highway into a bike path or a hiking trail to Delaware County from Chester County. I'm almost, it sounds like I'm trying to shoot you down. I'm almost feeling sorry for you, because you and your team, and I've been here five years, have been beating your head against the wall, trying to get people to pay attention to your, our rail committee. And every time you turn around, someone says no. And eventually, you're hoping somebody will say yes. With the infrastructure packages coming from the federal government, maybe we can get some highway money to make that a quick lane down to Wawa. And like I said, if it doesn't work, the worst thing that could happen to Westchester and the county is we have a beautiful bike path and a hiking trail going down that way. I'm just, I'm just trying to pivot a little bit, because it seems like year after year after year, you and Mr. Hickam are having the same problems over and over again. And we're not getting any help from Congress. The state, the state isn't belling up for any money for us, and we don't have any money to give you. And, but if we could, and you asked me, what am I going to do with the historic train? Well, I went down to the Ace Hardware in Pecopsin, and they have road sightings down there where we could redeploy our historic train down there, down around the Pecopsin Elementary School. And it would blend in very well with the trains from Ace Hardware that they have down there. So it's just a thought, and, you know, with all the work you guys are putting in, and it just, it just keeps going on and on and on. And that was just my thought of putting a high-speed line, because our object is to get from here to there. And the buses can pick up speed more rapidly and stop more rapidly, to discharge and accept passengers. And we wouldn't need all that infrastructure, except for a paved highway that'll allow the water to permeate through and go into the ground, so we don't have puddling of water. Mr. Sabana, thank you for allowing me to explain that.
So the idea, has this been done anywhere around the area that we know of?
It was done in, I believe, Havertown area. It's over by Manoa, over that way. SEPTA's actually done that. Now, whether they still have it in service, when I had brown hair, it was running very rapidly. But when I have gray hair, I'm not so sure what it looks like over there. But the, that's what they did. They actually took the train or the trolley car out, and they put buses on there. It was actually able to transport people quickly and more safely. The buses are air-conditioned, they're new, they have heat, they run smooth, no pollution. And if the ridership picks up, they could put a tail on the back. One bus carries about 42 people, so they could probably transport 84 people if the ridership ever picked up for the buses. And the best part about it is, there's no noise. The neighbors along the line don't have to listen to the whistle, the four blasted whistle each time they stop. You know, so there's a lot of pros and cons for it. But I'm just feeling sorry for the team, because they're getting nowhere. And we could be using that for community service, you know, for bus lines to get people down there. So that was my thought.
Certainly an idea. I don't know if it's one that you've ever thought of, but has the Rail Restoration Committee's ever thought of? Thoughts, Mr. McCoy?
Yeah, thanks. First, I'll just reiterate what Mr. Flynn says. I appreciate everything that you've done, the perseverance. I felt the ESI report was really helpful. And I think in a lot of ways, gave me a bit more of a positive feel about it. Two things that stuck out to me about that. One was the TRID, the Transit Reinvestment, Transit Revitalization Investment District. Seemed like an approach that was used for the Wawa station, joining with Middletown Township. So I'd be interested if that's something that's, you know, could be pursued. The other thing was SEPTA, I'm not sure when their report is due for reimagining regional rail, but it seems like until the outcome of that report, I'm not sure what will be available. I mean, clearly, unless SEPTA has taken control of this, and, you know, we get lots of federal and state dollars, and along with some vehicle like the TRID, I think that could possibly work. But I appreciate it, and, I mean, I'd like you to continue moving forward and investigate some of the things that ESI pointed out in the report.
Well, I would just add that the TRID has only been utilized in two places in the entire state. One is in the Pittsburgh area, and the other is in Middletown, the entire time of the existence of the legislation. And it's very difficult to make it work, because you have to have the school districts' approval. And you're going to be taking money from them, that's how the school districts look at it. You're taking money away from the school district. It, part of the legislation is they're supposed to be getting it back. But eventually, it has not proven to be a popular piece of legislation. I think that's why they're only in two places where it's been used. There are a lot of other funding sources that, particularly with the Biden administration, behind infrastructure that we'd really like to take advantage of. I would disagree with Mr. Flynn in that we haven't gotten anywhere. This project, by its very nature, is long-lasting. None of these projects, and if you look, go online and look at various parts of the country that are doing this, Massachusetts is a big one, they have all kinds of aspirational plans for commuter rail, additional commuter rail. And it takes years to develop. Mr. Hickey's been doing it, his day job is doing this very thing. So he can talk to that about how long these projects take. So we think that we've made progress. I think this economic study is a big boost to our plans. And certainly, council could write to SEPTA and see what their idea is, Mr. Flynn's idea. Think the right of way is there. It'd be a great deal of land that would have to be put together as a package to make that work. You've got a road through very nice woods, undeveloped woods, that would lead to nowhere if it doesn't work after the two years. This way, with the concept of battery-operated cars, you don't have any of the negative impacts Mr. Flynn was talking about. It's a very quiet ride, and very smooth ride. It's air-conditioned, it's heated, and very comfortable seats, very attractive, and so forth. So I went out to Orbisonia to look at them, and we actually operated them. They're very attractive. So, and as I mentioned, the, there is a great deal of interest in having rail service restored. As I mentioned, Commissioner Maxwell checks in with me every once in a while. The Daily Local News checks in with me, too, to see what's happening, to see if there's anything new going on, because the readers are interested in hearing about our progress, so.
Yeah, Joanne, I mean to cut it off. I don't think you need to worry about the fact that we want rail service. Your commission exists because the Borough Council wants rail service. So you don't need to, unless we disband your commission, we want rail service. We've tasked you guys with bringing it back to the borough. As long as you exist as a commission of the borough, you don't need to worry about that. So I know you seem like you're uneasy, and there has been discussion before, but you.
Six months.
I understand, but you are, you are not, unless we disband you, we want, that's the point of your commission. You're doing exactly what you should be doing, so don't worry about that, okay? Thanks.
All right.
Let's have some work. Mr. McGinnis.
I just want to first comment, thank you for your work with this. I do think that this idea is worthwhile. As you mentioned, the economics of that study makes sense for the borough as far as increased property values that we could all benefit from. The social aspect, as well as the environmental aspect. So you've got those three things going for you. With all that being said, how long did it take for the Phoenixville to Redding to Philadelphia line come to fruition? That was just approved.
Well, that's an AMTRAC project. SEPTA's not doing that. So it's been quite some time. I think it took 10 years for the three miles from Media Elwin to Middletown. That's a SEPTA project, so it takes a long time. So easily 10 years, it was probably discussed 15 to 20 years altogether.
And how much did that cost? What's the cost of that project roughly?
I don't know. I don't, they're still in the talking stages on it. I haven't seen a final budget at all.
And the other aspect, I just want to remind everyone at council, is we do have the stakeholders to make this come to fruition one day. Hopefully, it's going to take time, and I just encourage you to keep going with the project, and let's see what we can do.
So what I would say is, we have some time. If you anticipate the RACE grant to be coming back around in the summer, why don't we, I mean, if you need a formal vote from council to approve, or you to apply for that grant, why don't you bring that back to us in like a month? And maybe like next month's meetings, because that'll still be plenty of time. And we'll vote on it at that point. I would also say, you know, I think Bernie had a good idea, and I don't think it's, you know, is it something that we could send and ask SEPTA ourselves as council? Possibly, possibly the Railroad Commission could also just look into it and see what the viability of that would be as far as, you know, creating a bus. It's an idea. Please, come on up.
Tom Hickey, Malvern, Pennsylvania, 22 and 1/2 West King Street. Yes, that's a viable alternative. The Ardmore Busway is probably the worst example in the industry, so let's not dwell on that one too much. Yeah, it was started in 1967. The Westchester Line, trolley line, which used to come out here, had a branch that went to Ardmore. And that was bits and pieces of that branch that were turned into a pipe way, or into a busway. The challenge is, it never made sense as a line service. It was kind of a facility without the trolleys, it didn't make sense. So SEPTA runs a bus about every 20 minutes over it. It's just a local bus route, and it doesn't take advantage. There are bus rapid transit, as we refer to it in the industry, lines throughout the, you know, throughout the country, in fact, throughout the world, that do exactly as you say. Effectively, if you do it right, it shouldn't matter whether it's steel-wheeled or rubber-tired, as long as it works effectively. There are challenges for both. The equipment that we are looking at, which is battery-powered, I should point out, comes, in fact, it's operated, their versions are operating in England right now, that are hydrogen power, that are diesel power, and take power from wayside. So there are options there. But with the forbearance of my chair, we'll add those options to look at. So we have a weighing of the alternatives.
Yeah, thank you.
It's what I do for a day job, so.
Great, thank you. Is there any public comment? And if there is, I'm going to ask, I'm going to put my egg timer on, the Diane LeBolt egg timer, just because it is 10 after 8, or 12 after 8, and we haven't even gotten to our committee agenda items. Mr. Braceley, starting the egg timer.
Trying to be quick. Don Braceley, 423 West Neal Street. The story that Mr. Flynn told about removing the trolleys, that took place in Havertown, where I grew up, in front of. The story that Mr. Flynn told about removing the trolleys, that took place in Haver Town where I grew up in front of Haverford Junior High. So I used to see those trolleys every day. When they put the buses in, people hated it, but then they wound up loving it and using it as a bike trail and SEPTA was always on their butt. Anyway, a couple of things. Last month I was here and I implored all of you to read the 2018 feasibility study that was done on restoration of rail service. And I implore you to do it again and not just read it, but study it. I found the most recent study we got a very difficult, need to be very honest with you. I'm not sure how I feel about that one. The other thing is last June, and I think I mentioned this last month, we had a meeting with SEPTA upper management here. And if you go back and listen to that, which I did, it is very, very clear, despite what anyone says, despite how it's spun, it was made very, very clear where SEPTA stands on this. They were diplomatic, no argument about that. They were very understanding and encouraging, but the bottom line remains same. And so I would implore you to do, June 7th, it's on the Borough website under the Rail Restoration Committee. Sorry, one other thing, but I don't remember what it was. So it must not have been that important. So anyway, please read that study from 2018 if you're so inclined. Watch that tape. But just, we need a sense of reality before we get all happyfied about returning the rail service. Just consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, all right. Sure.
Mr. Braceland is referring to are things that took place while he was still on council there since that time? The plan that he's referring to 2018 has to do with $380 million feasibility study that PennDOT paid for $450,000. They put out to do that. That is for SEPTA to restore the line. There's no anticipation that SEPTA is doing that in their future, which is why we have the alternative plan. That is much less 20, 30 million perhaps to do the same thing. That's what we're working on. So I'd like you to read the feasibility study, but it's not what we're talking about.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Braceland, can you make it quick? One minute.
Which I should have taken last month. Couple of things. You listened to the tape. Figure is $550 million. Granted, the study in 2018 was as Miss, what Joanne just mentioned. That's correct. Another thing, yesterday, you may recall that in the last couple of weeks, $94 million was allocated to Pennsylvania Transportation through Chrissy Holleyham. I called her office yesterday. They got back to me and I specifically asked them if they knew of any possible earmark of that money for us. Okay, they got back to me very quickly. No, because that money in the U.S. Treasury is going to be allocated to the state legislature. And the state legislature will divvy up that money. So I contacted Carolyn Comit's office. They got back to me very quickly. And the money has, we don't have the money yet. And there's been real no discussion about where that's going to be. But $94 million as opposed to 550, I'm making an assumption that probably won't get any of that. So that's less than a minute. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Thanks again to the Rail Restoration Committee. We'll be in touch then about that. Let's move on to item number nine. And now that we get into the committee agenda items, these will be going either onto a consent agenda or for discussion tomorrow, or we'll dismiss them, just so everybody's clear. Okay, item number nine is approve Borough of Westchester Meeting Room Policy. There was an attachment up there. It was a 3-0 recommendation from the committee. Any consent, any discussion, any?
And I actually had the Chair of the Act Committee that, you know, approved this 3-0, have this put on discussion so he can pick her about the number tomorrow.
Under, we can do that. All right. So we're going to put that for discussion tomorrow. Any comment on that from the public? Okay, moving on to item number 10. Approve stormwater easements and plate replacement project at the three parcels listed. Not going to read them off. Is anybody from Public Works here or is it?
I can comment on these. These are three easements, but they have to deal with two projects that came as a result of damages from tropical storm Ida. A and B are two easements we need to complete work in the Plum Run area. And C is work we need to do with a storm sewer that's close to the Chester County Hospital. But these are replacements of existing infrastructure and we're getting funding through the Fed and state to pay for it. But there's a lot of hoops we have to jump through.
This was 3-0 from the Public Works Committee. Any discussion or consent on this? Consent, okay. Moving on to item number 11, approve wastewater bids. A is the supply and delivery of soda ash, which is a one-year contract from Univar Solutions Incorporated for $81,060. And B is the supply and delivery of aluminum chloride hydroxide sulfate, which is a two-year contract from Salco Incorporated for $149,050. This was also a 3-0 committee recommendation. Like this is, hey, I'm sorry, I snuck up on you. Feel like this is a normal contract, a yearly thing. Any consent on this? Okay, consent, thank you. Item 12 is consider requests from the CRC Watershed Association and Westchester Green Team for assistance with the annual Goose Creek cleanup on March 26, 2022, to provide use of the Public Works Department parking lot and employees to collect trash bags and debris. This was 3-0. This is something that I've participated in the past and it's just a lot of volunteers and the Public Works just allows, gives the things that are mentioned there for that. It was 3-0 from the committee. So consent, discussion, anybody? We'll put that on the consent agenda. 13, this is on the Parking Committee, approve removing the handicap parking space at 338 East Minor Street and the handicap parking space at 104 Price Street. Does that need to be done by ordinance? Yeah, so this would be to approve the solicitor to prepare an ordinance. Okay. Yeah, so we'll change that for tomorrow. It's 3-0 from the committee. Any, we consent on that? With the language that is to prepare an ordinance. Okay, we'll consent on that. 14, approve free street level parking for First Friday on Friday, May 6th at 4:00 p.m. and Friday, October 7th at 4:00 p.m. 3-0 was the committee recommendation from the Parking Committee. I feel like we've done this in the past. Consent. All right, consent on that. Moving on to item 15, another public safety. Approve the Gay Street closure 2022 from Memorial Day to Labor Day, 24 hours and 7 days. Committee recommends 2-1 with, so 1 dissent there. Mr. Dorsey, you're Public Safety Chair.
Yeah, and I was the dissenter as well, just because we have an additional variable this year with the Market Street closure with the PICO work. And we had gotten a letter from Chief Moorhead and Chief Palma recommending that we not close this year. And although I am in support of closing Gay Street, I think the additional variable this year and safety concerns. However, my co-committee folks voted for it. So.
I guess what I'll ask is, and are you going to want to put this on discussion for tomorrow night? So if we're not going to get consent, I feel like we should just save this for tomorrow, if that makes sense for everybody. All right. So do you want to speak to that real quick, Mr. O'Brien?
Just real quick, because we're making good progress here. One additional wrinkle that has come up because this has been a roadblock every way I turn on this. Spoke with PICO and their subcontractor on what the repaving of Gay Street looks like. They're required to do it curb to curb, was hoping that they would do it this spring. It sounds like now they will get to it at some point in June. And that is the most information they are able to give me is some point in June because they have to have three solid days of no rain because of the system. And I don't need to go into that whole thing, but I want to be transparent with council on some other challenge that has arisen since last we talked at Public Safety. So but I'm sure we'll hash this out more tonight, but just for you to ponder tonight.
And that was for which road?
Gay Street. So in terms of closing it, they're going to need to repave it. And is it?
Does it make it easier for them to repave it if there's, it's already closed?
Not if all the stuff's on it and it's just, you know, and when they're going to do it, it's another complicating factor.
Yeah.
When would they be repaving that? At night, most likely?
No, so the, well, I'll go in the process. Because there's a concrete base on Gay Street, they have to mill the road. They have to lay something down called Roly-Mack, which is a sticky adhesive to bind the asphalt to the concrete. When that's adhesive's down, it's down for like at least 24 hours. They actually have people walking around to make sure you don't step on the road because if you get it on your shoes or anything else, it's not coming off. And then that third day, they would put the asphalt down. And because it's a slower process, it's not three days to do the entire length. They'd probably do a block or two and then another block or two. And that's all going to be weather dependent, that there's three solid days of no rain.
Thank you.
More information. All right, well, we'll discuss that tomorrow.
This is fine. I just have one question, maybe to help tomorrow's discussion. Maybe I'm mistaken, but I thought we talked about potentially looking at some other barriers that were more easily movable in the case we did a Thursday to Monday situation, or was that a long term?
As I recall, Mr. McCoy, that was a long term, the, I think they're called bolsters or bollards. That's a long term solution. So we would be looking at that for next year or the year after.
Thanks.
Okay, so that's on discussion. Moving on to item 16. Approval of resolution to adopt the Emergency Operations Plan. This is 3-0. If I recall, that's a pretty standard thing they do every year, correct? We'll all consent on that. Right? All right, under our Finance Committee, we have item 17, Consider Preparing Requests for Proposals for the Borough of Westchester Solicitor, Auditor and Engineers. Oh, hey Barb.
So in committee, we talked about, it's been quite some time since we went out to RFP for some of these services. I was able to find out that the last time we went out to RFP for our auditors was back in 2015. Engineering was 2017 and the legal services have been over, well over 15 years. So.
All right, this was 3-0 from the committee. I think that makes sense. Is any, anybody consent to this? Okay. Item 18, approve appointing the following delegates to the Chester County Tax Collection Committee. A is Shawn Metrick as our primary voting delegate, Barb Lianti would be the first alternate voting delegate and Nick Allen would be the second alternate voting delegate. That all sounds great to me. We have consent on that. Okay. Under Smart Growth. 19, discuss the Tree Commission's linear park concept plan at 400 to 430 East Gay Street. There's an attachment up there. It was 3-0 from the committee. I did get a chance to look at that. Kevin, you going to talk about this one? Okay.
So this concept plan was presented by the Tree Commission to the Planning Commission a couple of months ago. And this, just so we have an idea, this is the area directly across from Borough Hall here, the infamous empty lots there. The Tree Commission had come up with this idea to install this linear park is what they were calling it along that street frontage there within the right of way. It would help, you know, beautify the area, pride of streetscape, some stormwater management controls there and some traffic calming measures as well. And they gave a presentation last week at the Smart Growth. The Planning Commission did make a favorable recommendation on this. One of the suggestions that the Planning Commission had was to dedicate that area and officially recognize it on the official map as park space. Obviously, this is just a concept plan. The funding for this would have to be secured through grants or other avenues. But the Tree Commission is just looking for Borough Council to approve this concept plan so they can move forward with any other, you know, finding ways to secure funding for this and getting design work done. It's going to be a long road.
Who owns that property across the street?
Fred Gunther is the property owner. He did acquire the corner parcel. So he now owns all of them.
So we would have to purchase that or would this be?
No, it's in the right of way. So yeah, we would have the right to do it. Obviously, we're going to have to work in conjunction with that property owner, especially if they plan on redeveloping at any time in the future. There's going to have to be some coordination efforts.
Well, if they ever do that, it's been, as long as I can remember, that's been empty. Thoughts on this, council? Consent on this or? Yeah, great. I mean, yeah. Consent. Item 20, approve the preliminary land development application for 250 East Market Street.
The applicant's here. I'll just give a brief introduction on the property. This is 250 East Market Street, the former Rubenstein's property. You can see it's being torn down currently. The Planning Commission made a favorable recommendation to approve this preliminary land development plan and also made a favorable recommendation to approve the fourth waiver request on this project. The applicant is here to answer any questions on the project. I would preface their presentation here or any comments they'd like to make by saying that this is a preliminary approval. They still have to go through a second round for final approval. And there are several outstanding items that need to be addressed in final approval. If you have any questions for the applicant, you can certainly.
Okay, Mr. Allen, question?
Can you answer any questions as well?
It's something we could potentially handle offline, maybe, but waivers one and two had me a little bit concerned with the stormwater. That might be just technical things I don't understand that I can be brought up to speed on, but it's just something that I need to do my due diligence on.
Certainly. The two waivers for the stormwater are becoming more and more standard. The Borough Engineer has provided support for those waivers. They are providing what's called a managed release system. Because they cannot infiltrate due to the water table there, the, this is a standard engineering practice where they control the release of the water instead of it just going straight into the stream. Did this over the Melton Center. And in fact, the DEP is looking at reworking the stormwater regulations to incorporate managed release systems. They just have to ask for the waiver because it's not specifically allowed by ordinance. But it is becoming standard engineering practice.
And like, what are the impacts of just drainage in the area if we, if we were to, you know, allow these waivers to take place?
Yeah, so this is in a regulated floodplain, a special flood hazard area. They have to go through very specific criteria. They have to meet specific requirements in order to comply with not only our floodplain regulations, but the National Flood Insurance Program and federal regulations. They are currently working through that right now with FEMA and DEP. So there, they have to do what's called an H&amp;H analysis. They have to do a whole analysis of that floodplain and the new structure and the removal of the old structure. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the new, the analysis is showing that there's a reduction in the base flood elevation of approximately six inches. So there is going to be an improvement to that. I don't think our engineer did the review on the stormwater, but I don't think there's any adverse impacts from the drainage because it's actually improving the situation there now.
I'm happy to talk about this offline because I'm about to, you know, the six inches. I'm interested to know more about that and specifically, maybe I can just send you an email about this and we can have this on discussion tomorrow. But I don't want to take too much time tonight. But I'm just interested to know, you know, if we go with the waiver, I don't remember what it's called, the system that gets used. And then if we don't approve the waiver, what system would get used and what are, what are the differences? That's kind of what I'm interested to learn a little bit more about. I can send you an email tonight and we can talk about that. But yeah, thank you.
So I had two questions. One, I just wondered about the impact of parking in the area because there's two churches there, right there. And so if you have point nine, you have 241 parking spaces, I think, in the 261 unit.
No, there's 219. No, there's 219 units.
219 units, okay, and what is the parking?
It's going to be 231 parking spaces. So they're having 227 parking spaces.
Okay, that.
There's, there's been a slight change to the plan after it was presented here, but. They did, they did a parking study in accordance with the zoning ordinance, which has been reviewed by our traffic engineer and they have found that parking calculations are sufficient.
Because on Sunday morning, right on Franklin Street, those members park on Franklin Street. Where you can park part time and on, on that minor street there, it's always tight, there's, and there's another church on Minor Street. And I guess my, my second question would be, they mentioned a property across the street that they might be willing to make green. And like, I wasn't sure if you were making green through grass or making green through some other kind of material. But I know that there are people in the second ward there that would love to have a garden. They, all last year, they looked to garden part of John O. Green Park. And unfortunately, the borough was not receptive. And so I'd like to explore the idea of possibly. Is that remediated land, I guess was my first question, is that remediated land where you were thinking about putting the green?
But it is going to be grass and trees and shrubs, it's not really intended to be, it's a very small lot, it's a. 20, 25 feet wide at the most.
So is, so is it?
But if you wanted to talk about, I mean, again, we should probably talk about the Septa lot. So i- if I can talk about something that we presented to the Borough Council maybe two and a half years ago as a concept. You see to the left of the proposed building, thank you. The left of the proposed building, this is the lot that's owned by Septa, this is the train station lot. So currently the back or the southern part of the lot is really just used for like piles of stone or debris, there's backhoes and things in there. So this whole concept came about by a former retail tenant that was over next to the hoagie shop. Who approached the borough about trying to green up this area a little bit because right now it's a property owned by Septa. Used to be leased by the Rubinstones for many, many years. And they just use it for parking, it's a stone lot, obviously it does provide parking when the rail has their little holiday run down the, down the line. But I think we were asked by council at that time to kind of maybe pick up this ball and run with it on a slightly bigger scale. So the idea was to kind of close this off. Have the borough sign a long term lease with Septa, I think currently the leases are like five year increments. I haven't seen, I have a copy of the lease somewhere, I just haven't seen it. I haven't looked at it recently. But create a public green area that we would construct with private dollars, cost the borough nothing, obviously we'd ask the borough to maintain it, cut, cut the lawn over time. And if the borough wanted to actually create additional parking. This easement exists right here to come off of Minor Street, um, East Minor Street and be able to create additional parking here. There's really very little green area in this section of town. You know, the, the John O. Green Park is right here, but I don't think there's a stitch of green in the park. So this, the borough doesn't collect any revenues on as far as I can, as far as I'm aware. People park there for free, they don't charge for parking. You know, I know the borough's constantly concerned about revenue generation. So they've kind of waived all, you know, in the past, obviously not the future, they've waived all revenue generating slot. So our thought was, you know, we use private dollars to make this a, and the concept was a very passive green area. Just grass, maybe some benches, you know, place to kick a ball or, you know, walk your dog. But again, you know, you potentially take a piece of this and do some kind of a, a community garden, you know, if you wanted to. So it wouldn't preclude the ability to have parking, you know, if and when the train station really comes about.
And, and that was my point, because there is not a stitch of green in John O. Green Park. And the neighbors there were very, very much for the last two years have tried to get community gardens built on, in grass at the park. But they would not let them in this little piece of ground there was because they said it was unremediated land, nor would they consider testing the ground. I'm wondering if this is, again, unremediated ground that Septa has owned and hasn't tended to, and now it's our responsibility? Or if that's something that we could actually put green in and make community gardens like the neighbors want, so, you know?
Well, you guys control it via lease. I, I, I think there's an opportunity actually for the borough to acquire it as well. I mean, we purchased some former Septa easements a little farther south of here at a time that Septa was really trying to dispose of a lot of these crazy little easements. You know, I know Septa has made a. A grand comment about their impact or their input on a train, the future train station here. So again, if the borough, you know, maybe got a longer term lease or even bought it, it would give for total control. We're just mentioning this because we'd like to, if the Borough Council supported this, you know, we would, we would take on the planning of this green park, building it, bringing in soil. Proper drainage, et cetera. Ultimately, we're not, if you guys want, envision something else, I totally understand, but.
I would, I would see this as more of active community gardens as opposed to a passive place to. For people to do nothing in, when they actually want community gardens and have requested it from the borough, who at this point has been unresponsive.
Uh, who, so currently Septa owns that, that part of the property that, that the mayor's talking about.
The whole thing, the whole thing.
They own the whole thing, so.
You guys lease it.
We lease it from Septa.
For like a dollar a year or something.
For the railroad, this for that, those events? I do remember that.
We've, we've talked to Septa about it and they're, honestly, they don't really care, it's our opinion, they don't really care, they're basically saying, they're not using it, obviously they're allowing people to park on it for free.
As far as I'm concerned, yeah, let's do it, green space is a, is a amazing idea in that part of the, the town, of the borough. And if as long as the, there's still space to put the parking, if and when we're able to put the station, then I think it makes sense. I think mayor, what you're talking about, the community gardens is also great as long as it's not contaminated land that we would prohibit that.
I don't, I don't believe it is, I mean, there is some stormwater management, some pipes, I think, to travel. As far as I know, this was nothing, this was always a parking lot for.
Yeah. Okay. Any other? Do, do you want to still put this on discussion tomorrow, Nick? All right, so it's going to go on discussion tomorrow regardless because you have the questions about the storm water.
Let me just address the storm water if I could. So currently there's zero stormwater on this site. The waivers we're asking for are the only way we provide any stormwater at all. So by removing these buildings and elevating the parking, we are taking the entire, and it's no small feat to take a site like this and lower the, the flood elevation. So we're really happy with that and we are providing stormwater, but there literally is no other option for, for, for stormwater. If we, in, in a site like this, and I think as, as Kevin said and as your, your engineer. Eventually what we're proposing will be normal practice at the, at DEP and it'll get incorporated in most, most ordinances. Because, or, you know, the ordinances typically follow what DEP allows. And this is a really successful program that DEP has started allowing a number of years ago. And it's in sites like this, it takes a site that basically has no other ability to create stormwater and, and, and gets some benefit. I, I don't have really anything other to tell you about that. You know, technically, you know, again, you know, we could have, I could have my engineer come tomorrow if that benefited you, but it's either this or there's no stormwater at all, unfortunately.
Okay, so a little slogan discussion for tomorrow, we'll talk about that.
Okay.
Thank you, thanks. All right, number 21, approve the lot line change application for 601 and 605 Price Street. Committee recommended this 3-0. Mr. Gore.
Yeah, thanks, this is a pretty simple application, the 601 and 605 Price Street, they, 601 is acquiring about 20 feet of lot width from 605 Price Street. There's no construction or land development associated with this application whatsoever. Pretty standard application for a lot line change.
What was the, just out of curiosity, what was, why?
There, there's some back history on this, 605 Price Street, several months ago submitted an application to the zoning hearing board. For some variances to subdivide the parcel of, that they have at 605 to construct a single family dwelling. There was going to be some opposition to that and the neighbors at 601. Came to an agreement with 605 to buy 20 feet of that lot with to prevent any type of subdivision and land development there.
Consent on that? All right. Item 22, approve the proposal by Limoncello Restaurant, 9 North Walnut Street to add a second dining platform at 5 North Walnut Street. Committee did recommend this 3-0 as well.
There were, I mean, there were minor issues, but I believe Mr. Gore is going to work with Limoncello and I over consent to move this forward.
I already spoke with Mr. Schu and their attorney and they have agreed to reduce the length of the dining platform by two feet. In order to accommodate a concrete barrier at the end, the southernmost end of that platform. So everything will be contained within that parking space and that was a recommendation of the police department that they provide some type of barrier at the end there.
Okay. Do anybody have any questions for, for them? Are we good with the consent on that then, with this changes? Consent? Yeah. Uh, okay, moving on to item 23. Approve the waving, approve waving the Borough busking laws, is this French, for the Fête de la Musique event on Tuesday, 21st, 2022. It's got to be French, I don't know. Okay, there we go, there we go.
Regiely.
Regiely, it's, uh, what is, committee is 3-0 on this, so what's this event about?
I think, yeah, let's have John explain it briefly.
Uh, so John O'Brien, Executive Director of the bid. This was an event brought to us by some community members, it's kind of a welcome to summer. Started in Paris, France, many years ago, it's done throughout the world, it's basically an open roll call to musicians to come play in town to set up in the various, you know, street corners. So we're not talking about any road closures or additional borough resources. The bid is going to work with Kevin and Sean and the other applicant, you know, the police department to make sure we kind of have some organization on where folks are going to be. They'll have to be wrapped up by nine o'clock, there's a, the Thursday, the 23rd will be the rain date for it. But it's supposed to be an open roll call, so I mean, it'll get a little, you know, it's supposed to be a little messy because that's the fun in it. But it's just kind of a welcome to summer celebration.
Not going to get a complaint from the, the music teacher up here, so that sounds fine to me. Have consent on that? All right, nice. All right, do you want to speak French for the next one, too, let's see, 24, approve the recommendation for the Smart Growth Committee for no solicitor attendance at the zoning hearing relative to the following application. Which is 118 South Walnut Street, Jonathan Deech, applicant seeks relief from the section 112 dash 802. Point 1, 4, to allow a deck to be closer than three feet to the side lot. So I'm sorry, we're recommending to not send a solicitor?
That's correct.
So we don't really need to actually, actually just dismiss that as long as everybody's in agreeance, right? So we'll just dismiss that item since. All right, uh, 25, approve the February 2022 Harb certificates of appropriateness. We can either go through them all together, or one by one, I see. We have approval, some, some conditions on some of them, but they were all approved, so. Mr. McGinnis, if you think that they were all pretty standard, then we can just pack them together.
They were with the recommendations.
Does anybody have any questions about any of the individual items on there? Okay, so we can be consent to all the Harb applications then? Great. Is that good, Dana, you got that, good, so, okay, cool, all right, um, all right, 26, other business, we have approval of the February 15 and 16, 2022 Borough Council meeting minutes. Anybody any issues with the minutes from last month? Consent on that? B is consider changing the meeting time, the Borough Council work session and voting session, I know we talked about that briefly last month. And, was that Mr. Flynn, did you bring that up, right?
Yeah, the, because we meet at 5:30 for committee meetings and, and these meetings seem to go much longer. Uh, we're closing in on nine o'clock again, I think. Yeah, nine o'clock, the, they're starting an hour earlier, maybe get us done a little bit earlier. So the recommendation was six o'clock. Yeah, so, Ms. Dorsey said it would be a little bit difficult sometimes for her, but that, that was the, the offer.
Thoughts, council?
I'm for it, I mean, do we need to make a motion?
I think we would need to approve that because that would have to, just like we approved the, the times in the beginning of the reorganization, wouldn't this be similar to that?
And they'd have to be advertised.
Have to be advertised? So what then I think we have to do if we want to move forward with this is to, um, is this like a resolution, Mr. Metric, or just, just as a, just as an item? So we could put it on for tomorrow night, possibly, or is that too soon? We could, so if we want to, we could put that on for tomorrow night as an item to, to make a, take action on. So we want to do that? All right, so can we have that on as a separate item tomorrow, starting at six o'clock for work and voting sessions? All right, C is discuss mask man in the Borough Administration Building. Mr. Metric, I feel like we have some kind of resolution already, but you want to?
Yeah, because of declining COVID infection rates, we made the mask mandate policy for employees optional a couple of weeks ago and then left the signs on the door to keep the masks on for persons entering the building until council had a moment to discuss. And by my appearance and the members elected body gathered, there was a conversation about this and it's manifest what we're.
Yeah, I think it's safe to say we would say that masking could be optional based on, especially on the, the new CDC recommendation, so. Is everybody in agreeance with that? I don't think, do you need to take action on that?
No, I can, I can put it into effect.
Make an administrative, okay, cool, all right, any, you have any issue with that? Didn't think so, okay, all right, so item D, consider contract for temporary employment services.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna ask the council table this, we, we are, we decided to go in a different direction with our hiring needs in the finance department based upon the director's recommendations and I support those. And we're gonna, we're gonna hire through our own channels, so if we could kindly table that motion.
Okay, we can table that. Is that fine, okay, um, so I have, to correct me if I'm wrong, Dana, but number nine, number 15, number 20 for discussion. And then also adding the item for the changing of the, uh, the borough meetings tomorrow. Cool? And, yeah, okay, okay, uh, there is no other business, so we are adjourned, thank you, everybody.